Just goes to print. Literally the second you walked out the door.
Then let's go ahead and get started. I will call to order the regular meeting of the Planning Commission. Today is Tuesday, May 24th. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Ms. Mason Minak, could you call the role, please?
Sure. Commissioner Bardas.
Here.
Commissioner Kempner.
Here.
Commissioner Patterson.
Here.
Commissioner Stern.
Here.
Commissioner Kapalansky.
Here.
Commissioner Dolan and Commissioner Richardson have requested to be excused as absent. And also, I talked to Daniel Petrowski, and he is resigning his post. We should have a resignation letter soon.
Okay, can we make the motions to excuse Commissioners Richardson and Dolan in one motion?
Yes.
Okay. Who would like to do that?
Motion to excuse Commissioners Richardson and Dolan.
Support. So moved by Patterson, supported by Stern.
Let's just do a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Move on to approval of the agenda. Does anyone have any changes or additions to the agenda or motions to approve? Oh, yes.
I just wanted to note that one item under, under item one, under new business, the on behalf, the people after that has changed based on a request from the applicant.
Oh, okay.
So that was different than what's in your packet, what was in your packet and what was originally posted.
Okay.
Move to approve the agenda.
Support.
So moved by Kempner, supported by Patterson.
All in favor of approving the agenda?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes. And we will move on to the meeting minutes of April 26, 2022. Any changes to the meeting minutes?
Move to approve?
Support.
Moved by Kempner, supported by Bardas.
Yeah, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, minutes are approved, and we will move on to communications. We had a couple things in front of us this evening. Thank you, Ms. Mason Minak, for the community development report. From March 2022, it looks like you were really busy. So thank you for putting that together. We also had two items related to, two emails related to the new business items on the agenda this evening, but I did not see anything else. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So we will look at those two items when the relevant agenda items are called, and we will move on to citizen comment. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to address the Planning Commission on a matter not on the agenda this evening, I'd ask you to come forward at this time to please state your name and address. Keep your comments to three minutes or less. And just a reminder that the Planning Commission will not engage you in any discussion, but we will be taking notes on your comments, and if there's things that can be addressed during the course of the meeting, we'd be happy to do so. Is there anyone like to address the commission on items not on the agenda this evening? Go ahead, come forward to the podium.
My name is Robert Rivey. I live at 4292 Elwood in Berkeley. And what I wanted to address to you guys is that Airbnb moved next to us. No notification, no anything. And I went to council about this, and that's why I ended up here. Last month, in April, nine people were killed at an Airbnb. The Airbnb that's located next to us has two living rooms, and they are going through Airbnb saying that it's a party house. Their garbage has been constant and all over our yard. They are, they had, until this last week, they had torn down a garage, and it was like a pool in their backyard. And I have something that my wife typed up to give you guys. All over the country, they are trying to curtail or ban Airbnbs because they're taking away from our kids. No kids can live there for our schools. The crime has went up tremendously with the Airbnbs. You don't know who's going to be your neighbor. They actually parked in front of, in our garage, and we live over on Webster and Elwood, and they parked in our driveway. So I would like to hand these out to you, and this is just a smattering of things that should be taken care of.
Thank you. Here's a second copy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
This last two council meetings I went to, they were talking about how they love Berkeley. This will rip Berkeley apart. There are nine within a mile of our place. On the other side of Berkeley, there's probably 27 that are reported. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Just as a response, and Ms. Mason Minak, you can add anything. I don't believe we have any zoning ordinance regulations related to Airbnbs at this time. I know there are a lot of communities that are looking into different types of regulations. We have a whole zoning ordinance rewrite to do at some point, so I'm sure that that's something that we would look at as part of a modern zoning ordinance rewrite, whether or not that's something the community is interested in regulating.
You know, all the new houses that moved into Berkeley made it a more friendly area. And then you start moving in, and Hawaii is totally banned. All across this country, they're either curtailed or banned.
Yep, I know a lot of communities are doing, are putting regulations in place. I don't want to turn this into kind of a back and forth because it's not the correct forum, but I'm sure you could follow up with Ms. Mason Minak on specific regulations that the community could explore, and that's why you're here this evening, because we are the body that would eventually look into that.
The city manager told me we come here tonight.
Yes, this is the place where we talk about ordinance amendments, so thank you for your comments. Like I said, we're not going to do a back and forth, but I would encourage you to follow up with Ms. Mason Minak. Is there anyone else who would like to comment on something not on the agenda? Okay. So then I want to move on to our regular agenda items this evening. The first of those being 1949 12 Mile for Loom PSP 0322. Would the applicant please come to the podium and introduce themselves?
Good evening. Christopher Enright, architect, on behalf of Loom and Attitude Wellness. Here to discuss the project in front of us this evening.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Mason Minak, did you have an overview of the staff report?
Sure. So this is for Proposed Provisioning Center at 1949 12 Mile Road. As you know, it's a multi-story building, multi-tenant building. And this was before you for a sketch plan earlier this year. Just a couple of highlights from the review letters. The Carlo Wortman Associates noted that you need to review the landscaping. That's a standard comment, based on your standards, and find that it meets the standards in section 130-37. They also, they recommended preliminary site plan approval with the condition that a shared parking agreement be reviewed by the city attorney. DPW had a number of comments. So in blue, you'll have noticed that there were two different sites that are on parcels that are attached to one another and interact with one another. If you were walking by, you don't know that they're two different parcels. And there's stormwater commingles and whatnot. Normally, what the city would ask for is for those parcels to be combined. The applicant has said that's something that they can't do. And so the city attorney found that it was fine to have a perpetual easement for the drainage and stormwater detention as long as it's approved by the city attorney, signed by all parties, recorded in the county, by the county prior to a pre-construction meeting. There's a fire hydrant that needs to be replaced, and that'll have a multi- jurisdictional coordination. And also, since it's on 12 Mile Road, again, the road commission, there'll be permits needed through them. And as always, the stormwater maintenance agreement will need to be signed and vitalized. Please note that there were copies of those in your packet, but those have not been reviewed and approved by the city attorney, nor is that usual at this point. Hubbell, Roth &amp; Clark recommended approval of proposed site plan with three conditions. The only one that's different than what I mentioned from DPW is the sequence of construction with lane closures estimates has to be submitted prior to construction. There was review and approval by the fire inspector with three, with three conditions. So in summary, they have clean reviews from all your reviewers. You saw it before at Sketch Plan. The real, I think, challenges that the applicant had were geotechnical and engineering. And with HRC sign off on that, as staff, we're comfortable with this going forward and that it meets all, meets all of the rules. In our letter, if you choose to grant site plan approval, there are five, five conditions of approval that are suggested. And of course, if things come up during the discussion, the Planning Commission, if they choose, if you choose to approve the site plan, you could add to those.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Does the applicant have anything to add?
Yes. So from, first of all, thank you and giving us the opportunity to speak tonight. Last time we were here during the Sketch Plan, there were a couple of concerns, questions regarding, A, how the overall project worked together. There wasn't a whole lot of clarity in some of the documents of understanding just the width and the breadth of the entirety of the project. And then items relating to paving and access and trafficking around the site. And so in the subsequent submissions, we kind of showed sort of the overall aerial and better idea of what the length and the width of the property actually is. One of the couple of comments were related to visually, for all the complications that are involved with stormwater and detention and things of that nature, you don't see any of that underground, of course, when you're walking by. What we do see is sort of a crumbling parking lot, and there was a concern about that based on the condition of the lot, especially on the east side of the property. So our current submission, in essence, removes all of the asphalt on the entire project, and it's all being either repaved with asphalt or previous pavers. And the entirety of the property is, encapsulates all the stormwater on the property. So there won't be any, you know, chunked up asphalt. It's all going to appear to be brand-new, replacing segments of the sidewalk in the right-of-way. All that's been submitted to the road commission for their approval. The existing submission has been formally been submitted to the road commission for permitting, so we're waiting for their approval. Nothing that they would come back with is going to affect the overall design of our project, one way or the other. It might be a few minor modifications with some of the curbing to that, to that effect, but it shouldn't affect anything with the rest of the project. And then there's other minor items, such as lighting, which has been handled. And so overall, we feel pretty confident that we've managed to address all the comments and the concerns from engineering and planning, and looking forward to being here in Berkeley.
Great, thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who wants to comment on this before the Planning Commission begins their discussion? I'd ask you to come forward this time. Again, three minutes or less on the comments. We will dutifully take note of your questions and try to get those answered as best we can.
Thank you. I'm Bill Skarmius, 1878 Rosemont, my wife Jackie. 1878 Rosemont. I submitted something earlier today, and thank you very much for placing that into the record. It's most appreciated. So I'm just going to read, just to keep it brief, a couple of comments that I have. But I wanted to, first off, about, provide my objections to the dispensary location in 1949 12 Mile Road because, first off, it backs residential residents on Rosemont Road, including my own. We believe, and my wife and I believe, that the site is basically too close to residents. I don't know the ordinances and how it was set up, but the proximity is extremely close. And the concern is, it'll affect our property values as time goes on. As more and more traffic, as the building becomes more and more occupied with a lot more customers. Secondly, I brought this objection up before. Loom would be 1,000 feet from a pre-existing private educational facility. We've talked about that. That was kinder care. And kinder care is located at the next building over, 1695 12 Mile Road. And again, this is in close proximity to an early child education center. And I know we've discussed this in the past, and I've written many letters, including to Representative Weiss in the State House, or, excuse me, the State Senate. We talked a little bit about back and forth about the protection of children. The law's silent in the state of Michigan, but even though it's silent on Puri 2K, common sense should prevail here. Common sense says that all children in Berkeley, regardless of their ages, should be protected from a marijuana dispensing center that would be located less than 1,000 feet from a marijuana dispensary. I have one other additional concern that I want is about the parking and the throughway and the traffic patterns. That traffic pattern is, there's a runway. The parking lots are shared, as we can see up there on the designs. There's one parking lot continuous. There is no blocking, nothing that would prevent a driver that would leave Brookline and or along the day, the early childhood education center with kinder care behind the medical building, through into the parking lot and along into the Loom dispensary. My concern is, is that that places it in proximity to children and parents. Behind the kinder care, there's a pickup location where children are there in their vehicles. They're picking up children, running to the cars. There could be some concern about that traffic pattern there. I don't know if that was addressed, but to me, it seems like a major concern of a shared thoroughway that can be used by patrons of the dispensary. I don't know if any foresight has been given into that, but again, this is like another common sense issue that I believe should be addressed. That runway needs to be addressed there, too. So all in all, I just wanted to point out these, what I believe is discrepancies and common sense issues and form, and let you know our objections to the dispensary location and that Jackie and I are adamantly opposed to this and do hope that the Planning Commission takes these points into consideration and votes no on the final approval of the Loom dispensary located on 12 Mile Road. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the commission on this matter?
Hello, Larry Cermo, 1890 Rosemont. I am now in my fifth house in Berkeley, fourth I've owned. Parents have been here since 1973. I live right next to Bill, and we are, I'm going to start with a little bit of his comments about the drainage. I live, if you go down Rosemont, I'm the house that floods every time. I get about a foot of water, doesn't matter the rain. So also, well, let's go in. With this flooding, last year accumulated, we know how bad we got our rains. I mean, it was coming up to the front porch and everything. But towards the end of the summer, August, September, the parking lots where the kinder care and where the perform projects going, they just put the new parking lot in there two years before. I came to the city manager and to the building codes and everybody else. The parking lot comes like this, the sidewalks go like this. You can't walk that street, 12 Mile, which a lot of people walk, for two days after it rains. Is that drainage going to be addressed where the water is not going to come and make the sidewalk impassable? The city manager has done nothing about it in two years. Your code enforcement's done nothing about it. When they were paving the parking lot there, I brought it to their attention. I've been in construction my entire life. Brought it to your building department. They did nothing about it. So every time it rains, if you go down 12 Mile Road, right between where the parking lots are, new and old, you're going to see it floods. Has that been addressed? Because they keep telling me, well, the sidewalks are the county, but the parking lot's ours, but the people of Berkeley can't walk the street after it rains. Is that going to be addressed first? That's my first question.
Uh, no, let's get all of them out there, and then we'll go one by one.
Number two, going back to the flooding issue. Last year, towards the end of the year, these lots actually flooded, and they actually had to do something. They brought out the drain cleaners like the city has, but they had to do them in those parking lots. Since that's been cleaned out there, we haven't had major flooding on Rosemont. So we know that the drains run through Rosemont to the back of that parking lot. There's an issue back there that needs to be addressed before we go putting in. I don't want to see these guys put in beautiful pavers and have to rip it all out. Something needs to be addressed with the, we know Berkeley has a drainage issue. We know it over St. John's Woods, down Rosemont here. But the Rosemont area problem is somewhere under that parking lot. That needs to be addressed before anything moves out, in my opinion. Now, to address the lighting issue, my lot's right backs up to it. I don't want the light shining in my yard. I know if you go over to the bank that's over, I believe it's Willshire, they've got the shields that go on the lighting so it doesn't shine in all the residents' neighbors' yards. Is that something that will be addressed? So we don't have the, because if you go now, it's perfectly dark every night. The lights that are in the parking lot don't affect us in any way, and we want to make sure that we still have that same privacy where we don't have the light shining in our yards.
Yes, we can cover that as part of the discussion, and I'm going to ask you to wrap up because it's been about three minutes.
Pardon me?
I'm going to ask you to wrap up your comments.
Well, I'm trying to get to all, it's, the only other comment I have is on our street. We're worried about through traffic and what the city's going to do when they start back. You've got, you're going to have that place packed all the time. We've got the daycare. You've got the medical. We've been seeing a lot more of people cutting 12 Mile through our street. Wouldn't hurt to put no-through-traffic signs up like Royal Oak does in a lot of their streets. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the audience who would like to address the commission on this issue?
Hi, I'm Larry Fons, 1908 Rosemont. I have a, well, you already answered the, or asked the question about the traffic and then the lighting. But my other question is, you're talking about putting a fan on top of the building, and there were going to be three. Now there's one. Just how loud are these fans? They're like a windmill, right? Is that generate electricity or? So I just want to know how loud it is.
Okay.
It wouldn't be too late to put a nice park there for my grandkids, too.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the commission? Have we received any emails or, I guess, emails that we should be aware of or letters? Okay, so we have this one letter from Mr. Skarmius. Sorry if I, if I mispronounced your name, who spoke earlier, and he did a nice job of summarizing the concerns that are outlined in that particular email. So before we get into Planning Commission discussion, I want to kind of go through some of each of, each of these concerns. So let's start with the easier things, I think. Lighting being one of those questions. Ms. Mason Minak, do you have a response to the lighting? I would assume we're requiring shielding and all the appropriate.
Yeah, absolutely. The zoning ordinance requires a photometric plan, so that's been in the site plan. It requires that there, and that requires that there is no light spillover into other properties. And so that was verified, and then also that the lights are shielded in a way that you can't see them from a residential property or that they would directly glare into traffic. So based on what was submitted, if they build what they, was submitted, then everything should be fine. And in terms of lighting, there shouldn't be any light spillage, nor there should be glare in residential properties or along the streets.
Okay. Continuing on, there was the question about how loud the turbine on top of the building would be. I don't know if this is something you can answer, if we should call the applicant up. I don't believe you should really hear much of anything.
You know, general principle is that it's not louder than ambient traffic noise, but it depends on the different turbine.
Right, so the turbine of which, before, we had a number of them proposed. Now we just have one per the ordinance, which is only 10 feet tall. And I'm not an expert on wind turbines. Yes, it does generate electricity, which we plan to send back to the grid. As far as the DBA of?
Between 30 and 43 decibels.
About 43 decibels, which is basically, this, I'm speaking at around 50 decibels right now. So it's about a conversation during, when the wind's blowing.
Thank you. You might as well stay right, right there, because I think that there are some more of these are going to be for you. So the question about the drainage on 12 Mile with the parking and the sidewalk, I've noticed that problem, too, as someone who's gone down that way a couple times. Do you have any response to that? What are you doing in terms of parking lot improvements and improvements to the stormwater drainage? I imagine not all of that would fall under your purview, but some of it probably would.
Well, there's a couple things that are occurring at the moment. So the one thing is, is that I think ultimately what everyone should be looking, or could be looking at here is this being an opportunity. Because being that we are required to, as part of the licensing process, to add a number of amenities, such as the previous pavers, and we're encouraged to do a variety of improvements to the site, that once we start making these improvements to the site, therefore, as I've talked with Megan about and several occasions, and to get some clarity, there's a requirement in the zoning ordinance that the entire property be brought up to standards, current drainage standards. So if somebody was to go into the building right now as another medical use on the upper floor and just reoccupy the space, there wouldn't be a requirement to do anything on the outside of the building because it's not necessarily a change of use, even maybe an office use or something of that nature. But being that we're not only changing the use on the upper level, but we're also voluntarily making changes to the exterior of the building and the site, that triggers the requirement to do the entire site. So from stem to stern, we're taking everything out. So whatever functions now, however it functions and however it drains now, it's going to drain entirely different when it's installed. And I'm sure Megan can speak, and I'm sure commission can speak to the veracity of HRC, making sure that every aspect of the design is such that it meets the current standard. So every drop of water that's not absorbed into the soil is going to get contained underground in chambers and held and then sent back out into the storm system at essentially a, almost agricultural rate as it's being discharged off of grass. So in other words, it's a way of stormwater management, which is what the overall arching system is called, containing the entire site. Now, it's true that everything from the concrete sidewalks in is under jurisdiction of the city. city and under HRC. The sidewalks, the curbing, the approaches that we're planning on modifying are under the auspices of the Road Commission, which is also part of our submission to the Road Commission for their permitting. So they're gonna be reviewing all those aspects based on us, again, voluntarily making the changes to the, to the approaches, and so they will be reviewing those items separately, but also itemizing the drainage at the same time.
So it should be improved, is the, is the short answer?
Correct. And being that we're planning on taking out sections of concrete on 12 Mile, the ones that are, you know, that we did notice when we walked the site after we, you know, after the last Planning Commission meeting, we wanted to propose to make sure that those broken up pieces or not so great pieces of concrete were replaced. And the, our motivation at the time was to underscore and justify getting the employees to the east side of the property to create a safe pathway for them. We didn't know that there was such a common pathway for the pedestrians of Berkeley, but it's a win-win there where that pathway then now is going to be, you know, more stratified such that it's cleaned up and then, I'm presuming then drained properly per the Road Commission.
Do you have anything to add to that?
The only thing I will add is that there was a concern about the existing, the pipe and the lead. So if you look at HRC's letter on the final page, number eight, you'll see that they had required that the applicant have that sanitary lead inspected and a video footage submitted to the city verifying that the lead is suitable for reuse. And they did get that inspection video, and it shows that the existing lead is suitable, is in suitable condition for reuse. So what's underneath the parking lot has been videoed, inspected, looked at by HRC and by DPW.
Okay. Thank you.
So if I could clarify that, that is true. We went, we, that was part of the requirement that HRC had, that we scope the sanitary, that's the sanitary line from the building, so that's a sanitary lead. So that's not necessarily connected to the drainage. So even if that pipe was there for the storm, we'd be ripping it out and replacing it anyway because it's all getting, it's all brand new. So every part of it, you're welcome.
Okay, thank you. Continuing on through some of the comments, traffic was another one, both the traffic pattern on the site as well as through traffic in general on Rosemont. I think the comment about the Rosemont through traffic is a more general comment related to some of the other uses on, on the street on 12 Mile, along with this particular use. Who would be the appropriate person for that to be followed up with if, if they were interested in a sign or something like that?
The appropriate person would be DPW, and I can alert them to this conversation tomorrow morning.
Thank you. Okay, so that will be that item. And then as far as the traffic patterns on the site, does HRC as part of their engineering review examine any, the site for any traffic concerns? Sorry, that one's to you, Megan. Does HRC as part of their engineering review look at any concerning traffic patterns or point out any issues that they may notice as part of the?
They do, and Carlisle Wortman does, and that was not an issue that was flagged.
Okay, so we feel confident that the traffic patterns on the site will be safe?
Yes. Also, the fire inspector looks at that as well.
Okay. There were some comments made about the nearby residences, the kinder care, and property values in general. I can appreciate all of those comments. What I will say is that if this applicant is meeting the standards of the ordinance, this is not a conditional land use or a special land use, that we are obligated to approve a plan that meets the standards. And if there is a loophole that you feel exists in the state's statute concerning younger children, that is not something we can address here at the local level. It would have to be addressed as a state issue. So I'm sorry for that, but thank you for, for pointing it out. I think that, that is all the comments that we got from the public. If there's anything else that we were not able to touch on as part of these questions or as part of our discussion, please follow up with Ms. Mason Minock. I know that, that the staff and our consultants try to be responsive to residents' concerns, so I would encourage you to do that. All right, let's get into the Planning Commission discussion at this point. There was a couple items that were left for us to talk about as a general body. Does anyone have anything to start off with? I know there were several minor items that were noted. I don't know that we need to get into each and every one of those, but landscaping was one item. We, as a commission, needed to determine whether or not we felt the landscaping was adequate. Does anyone have any thoughts on the landscaping? I, I'm very grateful that you're adding some additional landscaping to the site. I know that our standards are pretty light when it comes to specific landscaping requirements. So it was glad to see that, that there'll be a little bit of green here in this kind of sea of parking lot.
I think it meets the standards.
Okay.
I would agree, and I'm happy to see some more landscaping that was there. And I guess you can even say that there's like landscaping on the building as well as around, around the building.
Yeah, I think the renderings show, I mean, it's probably gonna look significantly different than the adjacent parking lots based on the number of parking islands and trees that are going in the middle anyways, so I think that's, looks great. Yeah, there's some like aerial isometric type views. These, yeah, like it definitely looks like a lot more than what's there.
I mean, there's nothing there now, so.
Yeah.
Okay, so the general feeling of the commission, it sounds like, is that we feel the landscaping is adequate?
Yes.
Yes.
Are there other, other items that the commission would like to discuss?
Well, I'll just jump in.
Sure.
Off the list. So, I mean, I think the shared parking agreement that we have to consider is potentially something the city attorney follows up with, right?
Yes.
Because the parking calculations look fine.
Mm-hmm.
Kinda checked through them all. There seems like there's plenty of parking for sure and adequate for future use based on the available space that's up there, so.
Yep, I would agree.
So, I mean, I'm just going through your, your, you had five items.
Go ahead, tick through them, Joe.
Oh, no, no. I, I think the RCOC permit is probably something that you're pursuing. It looks like it's just a single lane closure on 12 Mile, and they'll prove anything to do with their curbing and roadway, which is out of, it's kind of their, their jurisdiction. I mean, the, the next one, the pre, a pre-con, a pre-construction meeting as well as full construction sequence, I think is probably something that would come later. And then the last one regarding the mural, I think falls under the Berkeley sign ordinance, which is a different review by staff, right?
Correct. Yep, that, that would be a completely separate item. Okay.
I had one thing.
Yeah.
On sheet C 2.0, I don't know if you can pull that up. I'm very familiar with this parking lot. I work for the building that shares the parking lot with this building. So in a, I am confused about the arrows that are going, which would be east on the south side of the building. Here. Yep, so if you go, on the bottom, there's the two arrows that are going towards Brookline Street in the drive aisle there. That from Brookline all the way to, I don't know what that street is, that's on the other side of your building, is angled parking going this way. It's not wide enough for two cars, so I don't know why the arrows are going east there. I think it's gonna be confusing for the traffic patterns when, from Brookline all the way to, I wish I remembered what that street name was, the parking goes from east to west.
We could pull up an aerial, maybe?
I mean, it might, you might be able to see it on sheet, probably nothing, maybe an aerial.
It's Henley.
Okay, so from Brookline to Henley, there's that, essentially, it's like an alley, but it's all angled parking, and the angled parking has you going from east to west. So when you have that one section, and I believe, I know why you did it, and it has to do with the curbside pickup, if I remember correctly from the last meeting, I think, you, I just wanna ensure that you're gonna have proper signage there so people aren't driving the wrong way down the one-way angled parking.
The, the-
It's already tight, like you literally are never gonna fit two cars next to each other.
Right, that, correct.
So, I mean, my building's the one where it's, where the kinder care is, and it's one-way from Brookline to our parking lot, and people still go the wrong way, so.
I think the alley's only wide enough for a single vehicle.
It's barely wide enough for a single vehicle.
Yeah, so it's probably only, it's probably two-way.
But it's just that it's going, I just don't know why they would have it. On the side of the building, what they're showing is that you can go from the American Legion side of the building into the other side of the building, but all the angled parking goes that way.
Did you want me to comment? Okay, if you want to interrupt, so.
Yes, sorry.
So the, the theory is that vehicles come in on the west side to enter our space. We are essentially the west side of the building. Beaumont is essentially the east side of the building. That's how we're conceptually parceling out the project. So the idea is, is that our customers, although employees would be, as I indicated before, on the east side to get, you know, off of the, away from even Beaumont, so that frees up as much parking as possible, so there's no parking problems, vehicles would come in where that arrow is right there for either curbside or for, to enter on the northwest corner of the building to go into the actual retail space. So vehicles would come in, and if there wasn't adequate parking in that section there, that they could continue southward, and then there's a sign on that wall that they can turn east or left and then have access to the remainder of the parking on the east side of the building, in the, with the understanding that sometimes the American Legion during the weekends or in evenings, if it was full, that it would encourage people go to the east side when during the off-hours after 5:00 PM, that there'd be more parking available to customers for overflow on the east side than adding to the potential congestion on the west side. So that was the theory of why those arrows go eastward versus the other way. So if you're in the American Legion and you wanted to continue in parking in the American Legion in that last bay of parking heading eastward, or actually would go the other direction, that, yeah, that it would, you, same thing, vehicles would come in from the same exit and they would go turn right. So that's parking for American Legion, and then left would be overflow parking for Loom customers, was the theory.
So you'd almost have like a, for lack of a better term, a dead end, and you decide to go right or left?
Correct. So if you're, if you're an American Legion individual, you're gonna wanna intuitively go to the right or go to the west. And if you're a Loom customer, you may go in the opposite direction, and then there would be a sign there indicating overflowing that other direction to try to keep, you know, if there is at, ever at any time, a major event for American Legion and it happened to overlap with a, you know, a Saturday, let's say, in the afternoon kind of a thing for Loom, that it would give the opportunity for Loom customers to go eastward.
And Julie, your concern is that there's cars that use that alleyway space and are coming in the opposite direction?
Yeah, I mean, the angled parking lends it to drive down that way. I see where you put on the next sheet, C 2.1, where it switches and there is a way to go. I'm just recommending a very large do not enter sign. That doesn't probably mean anything because we have the same problem at our building, but it is, it is an issue. But explaining it the way you did, I understand why you had to do it that way.
The size of the alley is kinda awkward because it, it is not theoretically large enough for two vehicles to pass.
No.
It's 20 feet that's to the property line from the building to the property line, but then the wall takes up about a foot or so. So it's, it's, it's a very wide, one-way drive, is how it is.
So this can't be a problem unique to us here in Berkeley. Lots of small communities with older main streets have narrow alleys. So what do you at Carlisle Wortman usually recommend in a situation like that? Am I putting you on the spot?
So in older communities with smaller alleys, what we recommend is appropriate signage, and that also, that ideally, it's a one-way, it's a one-way lane.
Mm-hmm.
So that the circulation that goes behind the rear of that building is only allowed to go to the east, let's say, rather than somebody using it that other way. So having a sign, and again, the only way to do it is appropriate, is signage. Usually enforcement is on the property owner. However, in this case, I understand also that you will have people who are routinely patrolling the parking lot?
It, it depends, from the last time we were here, it kinda depends, the, on-site security on the outside of the building is gonna depend on, on, on the business, but at first, certainly, I'm sure there'll be somebody there to, to traffic that. So what we, what they do is, is what Loom does, is on a case-by-case basis, they determine what is required at each, if there's a parking problem like we've had in some other communities, we'll have somebody there to take care of it.
Okay, so signage, it sounds like.
Appropriate signage or painting on asphalt.
So would you be willing to work with the staff to come up with some appropriate signage for that?
Absolutely, absolutely. I mean, the good news is there's, there's plenty of parking, so it's not like people are gonna be fighting for spaces and, and having conflicts with, with, you know, fighting for space and not putting people back out onto the street to loop around to try to find spaces that may not exist. So that's definitely a benefit.
Okay. That was a good catch, Julie, thanks. Anyone else?
Or motions? I, I appreciate that we get the full, like, view of all the parking and all of that. I definitely think you're gonna have awkward times with the Legion, but I, I, I think everyone will figure it out, right? I don't know if it's the most ideal, but it, it'll work. And I guess on that, I can try and make a motion.
That'd be great.
Motion to approve PSP 0322, with the condition that you worked with the city on signage for the alley direction and the items mentioned in the staff cover letter. Is that good? Do I need to?
Is that sufficient, Megan?
Can there also be a finding that the landscaping meets the?
Yes, and we find that the landscaping meets the ordinance standard.
Okay.
Good?
Yeah, I think that's okay. Any?
Support.
Thank you.
Who had it first? He did, okay.
Motion by Bardas, support by, uh, motion by Kempner, support by Bardas, excuse me.
Can we do a roll call vote on this?
Yes. Commissioner Patterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Stern?
Yes.
Commissioner Bardas?
Yes.
Commissioner Kempner?
Yes.
Chair Kapalansky?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0. Congratulations.
Thanks very much.
Welcome to Berkeley.
Thanks very much, happy to be here.
All right, we will move on to the next item, which is for 3916 West 11 Mile, Quality Roots, PSP 0922. Would the applicant please come to the podium and introduce themselves?
Hi there. Andrew Danher with Stuckey Vitale Architects. I've been working with the Clars for a few years now on this site. We presented it during the Skite, Site Sketch preview a few months back, and we're here with a few revisions that were requested and were made in the packets. And we're here to answer any questions you guys might have.
Thank you. Do you have any staff report?
Yeah, this is for, again, existing multi-tenant building, two stories, 3916 11 Mile Road, and it was before you in, previously for a sketch plan. Carlisle Wortman flagged a couple of inconsistencies between the site rendering and the landscape plan. I think I had correspondence from the applicant that those had been rectified in the last-
New drawings had it all revised out.
Yeah. One of the things, again, the Planning Commission needs to make, review the landscaping and make a finding as to whether that meets the standards in section 130-37. They also noted that there's a flexible lighting tube proposed on the 11 Mile facade, and they were asking for more information on that, about that. As staff, though, we've had multiple requests for a tube like this to come, to be placed on different buildings. As staff, though, um, we've had multiple requests for a tube like this to come, uh, to be placed on different buildings. And, um, the sign ordinance, if you use that as if it is not underneath a soffit or if it is not, um, if the tube is not obscured in some way, that has been interpreted as a illuminated sign with a blank face and that also it shines directly onto traffic or adjacent property. And those are prohibited signs under your sign ordinance. So, if that tube lighting is covered by an awning or an eve or a soffit, it's been allowed. It looked like in the renderings, maybe that was your intent and if you could clarify that more when we come back to you, that would be appreciated. Also, um, CWA recommended that, um, recommended preliminary approval with some of the things that I talked about before. Um, in turn, in also indication of method of trash storage and removal. And then confirmation that the rooftop wind system would be designed to comply with all provisions of section 138 dash 99 at the time of building permit review. DPW had a number of comments, again, most of these are things that, um, they, all of these are things that they felt that could be taken care of in between site plan and the pre-construction meeting. The only thing that really stands out as, um, that would be needed is more details on the new and permanent temporary easements that are required with the adjacent parcel. In terms of HRC, they recommended approval on the proposed site plan. They, um, stated that the geotechnical reports submitted by the applicant states the proposed stormwater system is feasible provided it has a very specific geotextile separator. Um, and that needs to be noted, but the proposed permeable paper cross-section in the plan didn't have that and that needs to be updated to reflect that. Because obviously for the drainage to, for the, that permeable paper system to work, that geotextile layer needs to be correct. And then there was a review from the fire inspector. And so, in terms of summary recommendation, um, from the applicant, we could have, um, the planting along Eleven Mile, if we could talk about that, trash storage and removal, and the color and mounting location of the proposed loot type, lube, proposed light tubing. And then we have five conditions of site plan approval, um, that we would recommend if you so choose to, um, approve the site plan this evening.
Okay, thank you. Do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I can address the, the comments. I think most of the comments were carryover from the original submittal, which were revised in a lot of the co- uh, new engineering drawings as well as architectural drawings. Um, the lights that we are proposing are part of the underside of the canopy system that's on the building. It'll be part of our detailed drawings for final architectural detailing. Um, I, I understand the concern, this tubing lighting, and I, I don't know where the term tube lighting comes from, but it's a, it's a water-resistant LED light. Um, we're not looking to use it like neon on the building. Um, it's gonna sit underneath our canopy in an exposed area, so it needs to be wet-listed fixture, so that's what this is. And it's white light that'll come out of it is directed straight down against the building. So, we don't see any concerns. It actually sits tucked back behind the canopy, so it's technically recessed, so.
So, that would meet the ordinance standard?
That would meet the ordinance, yes.
Okay.
To answer the question about trash and storage, I, I hope, like, other establishments that don't generate a lot of garbage, this is a good thing for the community. Um, there is no trash enclosure to, um, entice people to think they're gonna find something great in a garbage can. Um, all of our storage is internal of the building. Anything that needs to be destroyed as part of this is in that same trash holding room. Um, this will be as simple as rolling carts like you'd see, um, in a residential property. These will be rolled out to the curb when trash is needed to be pulled, um, and that'll be a scheduled event so that it doesn't accumulate in the building. Third, the windmills, uh, or the windmill on top of the building is being used, just like the previous project, to generate some power, um, to hopefully be a good steward to the area and hopefully discuss these kinda things in an educational way. Um, this, uh, item won't be any taller than ten feet, which is the main, um, um, piece of the ordinance section that was quoted, so we're, our new elevations show that. Um, the, the, the roof does slope from south to north down, so we've taken an average height in the building midpoint of that and that's where our max ten-foot-high line will be set. Um, this, this, um, uh, wind generation system will be attached to the face of the building, so we can adjust that height to be whatever we will. It'll be just above parapet height like the section or the elevation show. Um, so that's the intent of this system. It won't sit on top of the roof on a guy wire and, and create a bunch of noise. I know there was some discussion about the sound of it on the previous one. This, ones that we've looked at are in the tens to twenties, so it's actually quieter than talking. It's probably making a noise less than your air in this building right now today, so should be good there and we'll meet all the ordinance.
I wouldn't compare it to that.
The, um, landscaping that we're proposing along Eleven Side is really truly not a landscaping. Um, we know there's some concern about inset landscape field along the right-of-way. Um, we're proposing a polymer landscape pot, if you will. These are things that are often used to, um, create space for exterior dining. Um, these devices will be pushed up against the building and fastened to the, to the ground with some sort of doweling system, so it won't move easily once weighted with soil. But they're intended to be able to be taken away in the winter so that when city or, or, um, applicant needs to plow the sidewalk, it's freely plowable.
So, would it be removed in the winter?
I think so. I mean, that's the intention. If, if you guys require us to move it, remove it in the winter, it'll be removed in the winter, but.
Yeah, I will defer to those that plow the sidewalks.
So, that was the discussion really about landscaping. We're not planting trees, we're not planting grass, these are annual, um, species that will be put in these pots, just like you see in any other municipalities. So, instead of hanging from a pole, they'll be sitting on the ground at grades.
Okay.
I think that was the four items, unless there was anything else, we can, we can answer questions on that.
I think those are the items. Um, at this time, I want to offer the opportunity to anyone in the audience who wanted to comment on this item to come forward. Is there anyone who would like to comment on this item? Okay, um, we did receive one email related to the project that was from a Scott Gordon. He lives at 1760 Thomas and is very much in favor of this particular project and had a lot of nice things to say, um, about the team and the plan. So, that will be included in the record as well. We did not receive any other correspondence on this, uh, correct, Megan?
Correct.
Okay. So, um, thank you so much for going through each of those items, that was something we were definitely going to do. So, I will move it, um, over to the planning commission now. One of the things that the applicant, um, left for us was whether or not we thought that the landscaping was adequate, similar to how we looked at the previous plan. So, any thoughts on that?
I think that leads me to a question.
Yes.
Are one of those things we're supposed to be figuring out, whether we're doing extra parking in that back area?
Um, yeah, let's talk about that first, let's do the.
Cause I think that has some landscaping aspect to it.
Okay, um, then we can jump right into that. So, go ahead, Lisa, your parking questions, comments that bleed into landscaping.
So, I, I guess, yeah, I probably need to come back up here. I'm guessing that where that back rain garden is, is where you were thinking about six extras, that, do I remember that right?
Actually, more of that, cause there's some in the right-of-way along coming.
You talking about parking now?
Yes, yes.
No, there's no additional parking being proposed in this plan anymore. So, if you look at the new site plan, we're not doing stadium-style parking anymore. It's just literally, we're parking in the same way it's parked today.
Okay.
Um, one row of parking, although unlike the last project where you allowed them to have a smaller alley, we've been requested to make the alley bigger. Um, only for the section we're at, which to me seems odd still, but we've, we've accommodated that in the plan for two-way traffic. So, what that does is it pushes our parking back into that field, reduces the amount of green space we can do in that, um, green space that you're speaking of, but we've done it because it was the request of, of the commission in an earlier meeting.
And the parking, um, that is provided meets the requirements of the ordinance?
So, those other, I believe that what she, what we were asking is the, those other six spots that we were proposing for the possible stadium parking? You know, we, again, it's, it's not a need, um, but you know, if, if that is something that you guys would consider, it's, you know, it's definitely something that we will, we, we would look at. Um, you know, we'd utilize it mostly for employee parking or try our best to utilize that in the most efficient way possible. You know, uh, the reason I ask that now is, you know, once we, we talked about this internally too, once we, uh, you go down the road of, of fixing all this, you go back in and add those six spots, if that was at a later date, it would be, you know, definitely costly to, to, and, and, you know, get back to that basis.
Probably almost impossible with the, the underground system we're talking about.
So, I mean, if, if that's, again, you know, we have a lot going into this site, that would definitely help us maximize it. It's not a need, but you know, it would be, it would, it would be an amazing, you know, amazing alternative.
So, to clarify, you do not have a concern about the parking provided on the current plan?
And I, and I, and I, I try my best, I was at this last meeting, but I try my best to put a report together that hopefully was included in the package that showed our other facility, some other stores, what they got going on. This is one hundred percent feasible for our business. It's just understanding that, you know, once we go down the road, there's, there's, there's no looking back, so I mean, it's just.
Understood. Anything further, Lisa, on that?
No, I, I, I wanted to clarify whether we were looking at additional park, you know, whether you were interested in that. I think I'd prefer to see the landscaping there as opposed to additional parking.
I would agree.
I agree.
Yeah, I would agree too.
And there's also, I mean, there's the side street that's right there, you know, I tried to eyeball it. Well, technically, you meet it, right? But if you found that it, you know, there's probably three or four spots at least on that side street that's not in front of anyone's house, that's, you know, that, you know, could be for overflow if overflow happened. But I, I would prefer the landscaping. And so, in the front, you're going to have the planters then, to kinda bring some sort of.
Yeah, just like the rendering on the front page shows, they would be smaller.
And there, um, there's plants in between the corner property?
Not at this time. There was lots of discussions and trying to make that work out with the neighboring property, but even offers to re-skin their building and do a number of things to improve the look, but the hope is that eventually they maybe go away and we figure out something nice there to do.
If I can offer something on that corner property? At the current time, unless that it, at the current time, that building is likely unusable. It was a live-work situation. It has been vacant for a long time. You can see that they only have, I think, two parking spaces. But this square footage, um, usually computes out for an office at five parking spaces. I've talked to both property owners, encouraged them to find some way to work together. But that doesn't seem feasible at this time. So, in my opinion, I, this building as it is, and this, this building as it is, will likely at one point be torn down and either combined into the nearby property or built as a much smaller building or some sort of outdoor function.
What is the square footage of that building now, do you know? I'm just curious, it's literally like not important. Okay. This is, this is the Marty Building, right?
Right, it's sited, right, which is in.
This is the one with the siding.
Which is in violation that we've been trying to get the code enforcement to.
I've offered to cure that violation.
It'd be a great pocket park.
I promise to keep working on it.
So, thank you for trying to reach out and do that. That sounds like that's what will happen eventually, it will go away at some point. Probably.
So, just a question, and I, I was, on this plan, are the, there does appear to be proposed plant beds. I mean, is that something in between the two buildings? Is that just something that's gonna be removed from that?
There's an improvement going through there, yeah.
Yeah.
We were hoping for more width there to work with the neighboring property, but I think now it's just pavers.
Uh, it's actually, you're talking about the area on our.
Yeah, it's on your property.
The three, five foot or three and a half foot. There's a stone mulch bed essentially with some shrub.
Okay. And there's enough room to like maintain and clean up and, you know, all of that stuff in there.
Okay.
Before discussion, I think what's here, there's really nowhere else to plant, so it meets the intention with the front, the rain garden and on the side.
Yeah, I would agree, Joe.
I agree with that. My only question is, so on your rendering, like on your page one, I guess the visual, you have these planters. These are the ones that you are thinking about removing or might be removing? I mean, is it an option to plant something more evergreen? Cause in the winter, it's just gonna be a bare front then.
So, in our current facilities now, we, you know, that we.
Decorate them for different holidays or.
Pretty much by season at this point, I think we're, we're kinda like, you know, we don't wanna be a distraction to, like, cleaning those sidewalks or whatever.
Yeah, I would work with, um, DPW on that, whatever they would prefer. But I, I, I agree, it'd be nice to, if they could be there year-round, to dress it up.
Yeah, I don't think DPW does any of our sidewalks.
I'm guessing, no.
You're responsible for your sidewalks.
That's whatever is most easiest for you to shovel.
It would be like a perennial grass that you leave long in the winter and.
And they're not going in the sidewalk right away anyway, so, I mean, they're, I mean, there's rules about that, so they're kinda tucked back, so. And the planters.
I know there was some comments about the mural too, that'll be part of sign ordinance and submittal at that point in time. But our intention is to obviously work with you on product and content and make sure.
Yeah, we have a lot of great murals in the city, so, um, I would encourage you to, to move forward with that. Um, okay, any other items for discussion on this one? Or motions?
Can, motion to approve?
Yes, subject to.
Our motion to approve PSP 0922 3916 West Eleven Mile Road. Subject to the, uh, staff letter, um, recommendations.
And finding that the landscaping meets our ordinance.
And finding that the landscaping meets 130.
Do we need to mention the lighting?
Section 130 dash 37.
Yeah, 130 dash 37.
I don't think so. I think it'll be good. Okay. Um, so we have a motion, did anyone second that?
Support.
Ms. Mason Minat, could you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Kempner?
Yes.
Commissioner Patterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Stern?
Yes.
Commissioner Bardis?
Yes.
Chair Kapalansky?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay, welcome to the city, thank you for your investment. Um, okay, we will move on down to liaison reports, does anyone have anything to report?
Hi, dear.
Yes. Okay, so DDA is still really focused on trying to reopen or add some more crosswalks, especially across Coolidge. Um, they're trying to get, uh, the Coolidge Task Force to meet to give a recommendation. They want something to go in front of City Council soon, so that that can start happening. Um, and then events, June's a busy month for downtown. On June 2nd, we have Ladies Night Out from 5:00 to 9:00. On June 11th, there's Art Bash from 10:00 to 6:00. And June 26th, there is the Berkeley Pride Block Party, which will be at the Robina North, um, from 12:00 to 4:00.
That is a lot.
I see.
Anything else? Yeah, go ahead, Joe.
So, for the DDA, for the crosswalks, are they looking to install the flashing, the rapid flashing beacons again, or what's the?
So, what they did is that, um, I think they basically looked at a recommendation of kind of like best practices, right? Everything from bumpouts to overhead lights. Um, they wanna try and activate that area as soon as possible. So, what they'd like to see is just adding signs right now and then re-activating the lights that we do have. And some on, on DDA were like, this isn't a, we can't make that call. It has to come from somebody who has more knowledge about the safety aspect of it than, you know, we know we want it, but we need somebody else to say what we want. And then they'll go look more long-term, especially if the road diet is like solidified, is approved there all the time, then they can start looking at bumpouts or, you know, any other options. So, right now, they just want signs right away so that they can utilize it for the summer and then look at what best works a year or two down the line when they can have a budget to put towards it.
Okay. Anyone else on liaison reports? No? Okay, commissioner and staff comments? I do not have anything to add, does anyone else? Megan? Sorry, Greg?
I just have one thing about Commissioner Smith, um, ex-commissioner now. I think we were kinda. were kinda stunned last meeting when he, uh, decided to step down. I just wanna thank him for his multiple, multiple years of service, decades and decades. Um, it was always an asset to have him on our commission, so looking forward to the next member, but, uh, I don't think we should not say our thanks to Commissioner Smith.
It's so much quieter.
And his wealth of knowledge. I mean, so much knowledge, but, uh, always an asset.
Well said. Megan, did you have something too?
Um, I, I have three items. Um, one picking and backing on, um, Commissioner Patterson. Um, with Dan Petrofski's resignation, now the planning commission only has seven members. Um, and the bylaws require that you have five voting members for a quorum, so your presence is essential.
Someone gets to skip.
Right. I wanna thank you all today, especially those of you who submit, sub, uh, submitted to my guilt, um, to, to get you here. I really do appreciate it. Um, also, please let us know if anyone you feel would serve well in the planning commission, so, um, because we have those vacancies and, um, city council looks at your appointments in June, correct? Um, then also, at that point in time, they look at, um, training and attendance. Uh, there are a couple of you who haven't had your training put in yet, um, that some of it may be my fault as well, um, for not providing resources and prodding. Um, so those of you who are in that boat, I will email you tomorrow, um, with some resources. Um, but that's supposed to be done by end of June, so that's the end of fiscal year. Um, and then also, please let me know if you have any comments on Huntington Woods Master Plan. I'll write that up, um, the response and have it in your packet on June 7th, um, at that meeting. Um, again, thank you all for taking the extra evening. Um, we'll have a sketch plan for the proposed Seven Points Provisioning Center that's on Woodward. Um, they've also previously submitted for a conditional rezoning for two properties to parking. Um, because the conditional rezoning was, had a condition of site plan approval, the city attorney said that that needed to hold until the site plan was ready, and they wanted to, um, do the sketch plan first. So, um, it's.
That was one that we already approved?
No, you haven't seen this one. It's on Woodward. It's the old sub shop.
But I mean, the conditional rezoning, cause I remember we saw a parking. No?
No, this is, this is completely new.
Okay.
Completely new. Um, and only two blocks north of Insetta Garage, so I just wanted to, um, I will put things in the, um, planning commission items folder hopefully, uh, this week. Um, so look there for the plans set if you want a preview. Um, and then, um, also the Ivy has resubmitted plans. Um, I will get, I, comments from reviewers back this week, um, but hopefully they could also be on that June 7th agenda.
Great. Okay. So, any, if there's nothing else, anyone else? Last call. Motions to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Have a good evening, everyone.